Tom Stauskas.
Okay. Work session, agenda, MO2 discussion. Marty Clark updated on yacht club memorial day events. Stan's ribbon cutting. Got an add to the agenda and bullet point right after that on junk car okay. Then liaison reports. During for a close session.
Sam Piper, the energy council. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, I need to uh.
We need to add Mr. Frank Watkins. From the chairman of the marine advisories committee to discuss. This was supposed to be. That's fine. This was supposed to be the liaison meeting. Marine advisors.
Anything else?
Uh, after the close session, we will contract issue discussion.
I'm sorry. We have a closed meeting for Sam Piper discussion.
A contract issue.
Of what?
Uh. Personnel.
Supposed to. Four.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming.
I have a full house and I'm glad you're here. Just so you know, this is an informal work session.
Open them.
Could Marty proof my clarification so I can go back? What meeting was that dated? Cause I know this is signed and dated as it is.
Yes, and this is, and this is wrong.
So what meeting was this?
Uh, the special meeting to discuss. The MO2 which was held eight, ten, two thousand and eleven. If you watch videotape, it started forty-eight minute mark. Put all the other stuff.
Forty-eight minute mark?
Forty-eight minutes.
Forty-eight.
Or you can ask a director that was there.
Who was that?
Well, Tom Terry was there. Boat ramps were excluded.
Is that right, Tom?
Yep, boat ramps are not, if you look at MO2 as it's written, not, uh, three. Amenities defined, boat ramps are not on that list. But when you go to the next page, under section five. Uh, boat ramps got listed in a list going down the page. And that just didn't get removed from the list.
Jim Trummer will eventually, I'm sure. It was a mistake. And. No. They're posted private property. You ought to be.
One of.
Well, the other one. The other one used to be chain link fenced up. You had to keep dock. And that's changed, but still private property.
Well, okay, it's not posted.
It's not posted, should. Of course, it's posted no parking for trailers. You gotta find one of the trailers to take a picture of the no parking stuff. That was it for MO2. But when it comes up again, I do want to mention, I never would've mentioned, of course, this will be vote. But somehow or another, under classification use of amenities. The authority in MO2 is. Our declaration of restrictions would say. Right here, some state purposes associations for promote community welfare of the property owners of the sub. That's what our declaration. Huh? Yeah, but go down to five A.
It's there.
These amenities that serve the association membership and the general public. When were we elected to serve the general public? I don't think the word general public appears in our DRS. And it doesn't appear in our charter. That's not our child.
Wasn't part of that discussion that the county had listed that boat ramp as?
That goes back ten years ago. That was also a mistake. But today. You can go to the DNR pamphlet from about four years ago, we're still listing.
Yeah.
Maryland Coastal Bay.
We keep letting happen.
Coastal Bay's listed as a public boat.
Yeah, I remember that part of the conversation.
They will not move it.
Yeah, they will.
They will?
They will, we start towing people to park their trailers there, which we have the absolute right to do. If you post a bright sign.
Okay, um.
All right.
Tom, I went to, big pardon.
I was gonna start.
Moving to another issue?
No, 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 I was gonna start going around the table. I mean, Marty, are you done making your presentation? I just wanted to be sure you were done with the presentation. Tom, if you'd like to start.
Well, no, I, I, I went to the commissioners meeting. And this was in the minutes. Would you like me to read what they expressed in their minutes about allocating monies to the association?
Go ahead.
If it does anybody any good. The commissioners reviewed the requested grades for Ocean Pines Association. The commissioners consulted. With county attorney Sonny Bloxum. With regard to providing county grants to OPA for tourism related activities. Namely, providing a grant of six thousand dollars for free to cost of fireworks, the annual July celebration. And a ten thousand dollar conditional grant to be used for recreational facilities. Programs open to the public. Just says facilities, programs, open to the public. That's in the minute. Mr. Bloxum advised that the county could only allocate additional funds for activities. Related to public uses. Only for public uses. Upon a motion by Commissioner Bunting, the commissioners voted unanimously. To increase. The grant funding for police aid by sixteen thousand dollars. With a caveat that OPA decrease their funding to police aid. By the same amount and direct the funds for said uses. And provide, provided that the recreational facility programs are open to the public. So it's a quid pro quo. So they are increasing police aid because that's obviously a public. Function. And, you know, we can use sixteen thousand dollars re-advocate somewhere else.
Okay, but I didn't hear boat ramps, man.
No, what?
Yeah, I know, but I've had the exact same thought. But if you listen to it, it says recreational facilities. Uh, not in the last part that he read.
Could be tennis courts that are open to the public.
We don't know that we have tennis courts open to the public.
Don't we have like, like, like the ones?
Privately?
No, no, I know that.
The membership?
Aren't there some public tennis courts over Menclan Creek?
MO2 might say that. We'll get to that.
Hey, the pay courts are open to the public.
To anybody who wants to drive in from Snowville, that's only because we're not monitoring.
Pay courts are open to the public, even if they're a membership. If you have a member of, they're a pay.
Of course.
Their wording doesn't say it has to be free.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, Tom, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just, my, my recollection of the meeting was exactly that of Marty's and maybe else of their end. The videotape of the meeting. Is that ramps not supposed to be open? Um, and as we review MO2, I think it's going to be imperative. That we ask the general manager. To give us what the costs are going to be associated with in actually implementing. The, uh, the closing of them and what it's going to entail to do that. The costs might be and various options that could be used. Well, if they're not open to the public, then they're not.
That's not necessary. True, my yard's not open to the public, but I don't shoot everybody that runs the yard.
But can I ask a question while I use the laptop? Okay, so we just had this conversation about tennis courts. If you buy a membership, you can play tennis on courts, correct?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Now, do you have to be, do you have to be Ocean Pines resident to buy that membership?
No.
So is there a membership to be able to use the membership?
No.
No, there isn't. What are you suggesting?
Well, no, I'm, I'm.
Joe, let us finish this table. You'll get a chance, Joe, you will have an opportunity, I promise you.
No, I'm saying. I'm saying the argument is that they're open to the public because the public can buy memberships. County's saying that they're open to the public. Well, in order for the boat ramps to be considered. Open to the public by buying some sort of, do you understand what I'm saying? Do you get what I'm saying?
So what, Joe, that is inappropriate.
I know.
Okay, it is inappropriate.
Tom, back.
Terry, what I'm thinking, I'm hearing you say. Is, is there a possibility to have a membership for the use of the boat slips? Is that what you're saying? Either by residents and non-residents?
What I'm saying is that, that we're getting around the argument of the. Tennis and those kinds of things. Being open to the public because people can buy a membership to them.
Right.
The county is saying.
We're good. In all, in all due respect there, I understand why, understand what you're saying. Issue that I'm simply trying to put on the table is, it's one thing to say. Boat ramps shouldn't have been on here as being amenity. There's another thing that comes along with that that says, how closed are they? You know, do we in fact have to create a methodology of leasing this thing? Monitoring it, what's the cost of doing that? All I'm saying is at the meeting. It, you know, you look at the videotape, clearly said that the ramps were not supposed to be on there. And like the, you know, fishing pond at the South Gate. You know, you don't have to buy a wristband to go to the White Horse Park concerts either. Uh, you know, there are amenities and programs that go on in our community that people can attend. And they don't have to show their membership card for it to show up. So if you take ramps off of here, which I agree in the meeting, we're supposed to be off of. Marty, we agree. There's a whole implementation side of this that says, in my phraseology, just how closed are they? You know, which we have to solve later.
Let the rewrite of MO2 take care of that. It was Bob. Who actually pulled the boat ramp. Because much of what you're saying, it was, now that I think about it, it was Bob's.
That's all I want to say.
We had a lot of complaints from members who could. Use the boat ramp because it was always.
How about the members who live across from?
Well, yeah, that too, but, but we, I mean, I remember us having a lot of complaints from members not being able to use it. Because people would park there for long periods of time and. Is that correct? I recall that.
All I'm saying is I agree that this needs to be adjusted, but in adjusting it, we're gonna have. What is the implementation here and what's the cost? What are we looking at? Which has to be a proposal from administration that says, how do we do?
So maybe we should, need to send this back to the committee, is that what you're suggesting?
They already are.
Every two years.
Do you have any idea when they would be presenting the advice?
According to Jim, it would have happened last week, except their meeting had a problem.
Okay, so they're currently working on.
There was no forum.
Okay.
Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to ask or add to the discussion?
I did check with you before it did this, right? Yesterday.
Jack, anything you?
No, I just want to get that in the record.
Bill?
No, I just want to reiterate, doesn't say anything about boat ramps. I don't know how this whole thing started, doesn't say anything about boat ramps.
About the additional money.
In the county, no, the county. Does not say, the minutes does not say anything about, about boat. I wish that hadn't been reported that day.
Terry, anything else you'd like to add to it?
Well. You just have to, you just have to be careful because when they say recreational facilities, they don't define it either way.
Exactly.
I gotta say something. For the amount of money you get from the county for recreation, I'm not gonna lose one sweet over putting up a gate that says, go away. Members only.
Neither am I. But I'm just saying, you can't assume what you're turbing because they could have assumed something else. It's not cut and dry.
Private property, no trespassing.
Okay, so what I am understanding from this, around the table, MO2 is at the bylaws committee right now. They're reviewing it and presenting something to us perhaps the next meeting or certainly by the thing after that. Am I correct, Marty?
I hope so.
Okay. Would you say, are you the liaison? I'm sorry, I thought you were Marty. Okay, okay.
Was.
I was for moments.
Well, there was a good reason they probably, okay. Okay, so Jeff, is that reasonable with the next two meetings? We should have something from them. Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Now we will start in the room and this is open. If you have a question or comment, just raise your hand and it's. Would you just state your name and your property address, please?
Yeah, Dan Pelletier, one Parage Lane. And I'm here on behalf of neighbors. Roy Irwin is at four Parage Lane. Gene Ringsdorf is at two Parage Lane. And there's Ron, that's Ron Green who couldn't be here, he's right next door also. I have here a bunch of notes that we got to you from, from Roy. And I'll be just excerpting some from Roy's online. And I'll start with the bottom line, which is, I believe now is the time to put in a gated entrance. So I have a guard on duty. And let me get all the information, let me just up to that bottom line. First of all. All of us, the four of us that I mentioned. If anybody knows what's going on at the ramp, it's us. In the beginning, Roy starts out. I applaud the board for taking action for the much needed repairs on the boat ramp. And goes on a little bit more and then says, talking about outside abuse. Many of nearby boat dealerships that are ramped take clients out to test ramps. There are also commercial crab boats that use the dock facilities. There are also other work boats. Again, on outside abuse, I noticed especially during the spring launch, many of the boats are being launched. With Delaware tags, go down the canal and make left. Those of you who don't know it, that's away from Ocean Pines. So since this is the first person author, I assume that these aren't residents, not residents also. I personally know, this is Roy, I personally know several people I work with or acquaintances. That use the boat ramp on a regular basis. My appointments route east and shore and these are not residents of Ocean Pines. And he goes on and slips a little more and he talks about inappropriate use of the facility. I also have issues on, on how the boat ramp is used. Many people fish, crab, swim, sunbathe on the docks. There is no one, there is one sign on one of the docks stating it's not allowed. So they use the other docks. Some of them entirely ignore the sign. I have seen large groups of people show up with one jet ski. And taking turns all day long, using the jet ski while waiting their turn, hanging out on the docks. And doing the things that I mentioned before. And that's one of my pet peeves because we get to see all jet skis and jet skis are fine and many of them are very. They, they go by the, okay, they take the time they can. A lot of them are not. Jet skis are very, very noisy. Correct. And to have one's jet ski there that goes in and out, and in and out continuously. I know maybe it takes an hour to have lunch. Sitting on the dock, parked, I don't know where. Then it goes in and out. So there are a number of those that, and that, you're not increasing the congestion there by one boat.
What's the speed limit on that?
Six.
Six knots.
And they're not doing six knots, I take.
Uh, some are, some aren't.
No, but I mean, the cases that you're talking about where they're going back and forth, back and forth.
Again, I didn't say they're all, they don't all break rules. All I'm saying is, what I'm saying is it's congested. What we want is less use of ramps so that people use it, not more. And this jet ski, uh, is gonna increase the usage.
I was visiting there the other night on the back bulkhead in my boat. One of those jet skiers waved to his arm.
Yeah.
It was what we call the one finger wave. He asked him to slow down.
Yeah, well, one of, so, I'm reading to Roy, so if you talk to Gene and I, we have a whole bunch of other things. One of them was, uh, someone came the other day and, I'm pretty sure it was commercial. I went over and looked at the tags, there were commercial New Jersey tags. And it was branded boat. And they revved up the engine for whatever reason, I don't know, that's, but that's pretty annoying. Anytime of day, especially. Revved up the engine, uh, Roy got upset, I think, was it, somebody, somebody said something.
The guy I chased?
Yeah. I think that quite regularly.
You must get very fast.
Well, yeah, he was out there revving for a little while.
I mean, do fights break out?
Yes.
They do? So people physically get hurt?
Uh, it's more verbal.
Oh, okay.
But I think, Dan, didn't you call the police last year threatening?
Two years ago, I was out working on my pontoon. And I was painting, I had paint all over my hands, so I couldn't really get off the boat. But I heard this kind, this argument go on about fifty minutes. Then one of the guys said, I'm gonna kill you.
Oh.
And at that point, I went inside and called the OP police. I don't know if he's serious or not, but when somebody makes a threat like that, somebody would do something. Anyway, there's lots of, many. We're on inappropriate use, okay? And he says that docks have become a popular place for teenagers. They go there, smoke, drink through rocks and everything seemed to have zeroed in on my yard. Et cetera, et cetera. With, here, here's, here's the essence of, I was trying to say before, with the new ramps and an additional pier, a docking pier that's proposed. This area is just gonna become more attractive for parties type you just talked. And we, we hope that the Ocean Pines will take action to relieve this, okay? This also includes parking because they're really, when you get boats that are legitimate, they're, they take up parking space much. So every time increased the facility, standard, it gets real, sometimes very heated. Okay, now we get back to the bottom line, which is said, I believe Roy and us. That now is the time to put a gated entrance or have a guard on duty. I think that's it. Do I do okay, Roy?
Dan, may I ask, since you're the spokesman for your group and certainly you have a gentleman, maybe add a time in here. What, what is your recommendation? I mean, are you saying a gate would be the best with like a pass swipe card? Are you saying a chained fence with the key that they get from the police department and open and take it back? I mean, what do you think? A sticker on the back that says Ocean Pines Boat Ramp?
No, you wouldn't be able to.
I mean, what, what is your group's thinking?
I don't know, two. But I think with the effect. One of them is as we do over in Ocean City. You just post a guard, not a person there. Check board and check the cars as they come in. Either they have to get a registration or they have to at least tell them they're gonna work from a particular house in Ocean Pines. Some information says from. So anyway, a person there that somehow checks it physical. And that could be, I mean, this is mostly on the week, almost entirely.
I was gonna ask you, are you just thinking seven days a week?
No, 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 no.
Twelve hours a day or what do you think?
You want, you want two shifts a day.
So just Saturday and Sunday?
Or even, maybe even three.
Bob, does anybody, do the police patrol back there?
Police.
I mean, that's part of their, you know, rep, routine, right?
They actually open and close the gate now. Where is the gate?
Dan, are you also suggesting that Ocean Pines residents still are able to use it with no charge? Or that there should be a membership to the boat ramp? As your committee, I'm just your group. I'm just asking your opinions. I'm brainstorming here.
Yeah, no, and let me, let me indirectly answer, then I'll answer.
Okay.
Indirectly, right now, there is no control of that. There is a sign, sign is nice, there is no control either. All recommendations. How you do it, should they have memberships, should the people pay? They don't have to pay. What, what I would suggest would be that you make people register just as you do beginning of the year or anything else for golf. We register golf, register times. You put it on the swipe card. You use a swipe card system or have an individual there with a handheld swipe. I mean, they're, they're available.
Like the beach club?
Yeah. And that's, and then at that point, that takes care of the control. Now whether or not you charge. Individuals, I don't particularly care, you gotta pay for it somehow. Maybe, I mean, if you're gonna allow commercial in there, we are commercial in there, but if you get really whack up, you know, charging a lot, use the facility. And then you charge outsiders a modest or even less than that, should expenses, but it doesn't, I'm just, I'm just like we pay for.
So you're, you're basically saying that, that the neighbors, the neighborhood doesn't have a problem with being a public ramp? Is that what you're saying?
We have a problem with it being out of control. That was our issue.
Well, how, how swipe card and selling membership to. An individual who may not necessarily live in Ocean Pines, isn't that making it? You're paying for it, but they're not in Ocean Pines, so it's. Blassey public, is that where you're coming from?
It's open to the public, we're not recommending. Trying, I was trying to answer the question.
No, I know, I'm trying to understand what's, what's doable, yeah, what's doable, what, what's agreeable and, you know, and, and how people are. I've gotten calls on this.
Yeah.
And they want private boat ramp. That's what they're telling me. They, they, they mentioned the same stories about the left turn going up to Delaware.
Yeah.
Same stories. I've heard these. So, you know, we've gotta come to a decision. So we're looking for guidance from the community to tell us, you know, what the consensus is.
Well, right now, it's not a private boat ramp, it's a public boat ramp.
Yeah.
It's a private boat ramp being trespassed upon.
Yes, the sign is only keeping the honest people honest, that's all it's doing.
But once you get control of it, you can do what you. I mean, once you get the access control, you decide that, uh, yeah, this really needs to be tried, then all of a sudden you're saying, let it go out.
Can I ask?
So you don't have to make that decision, you do have to get it under control.
I'm sorry.
You know, go ahead.
Dan, not having a vote, I'm just curious why there is objection to people going down there to crab or sunbathe? What, what, what negative effect is there?
I didn't read a vote. I'll try to paraphrase, you wanna say it or you want me to?
Well. I have no problems with people sunbathing, but they're congregating on docks. They're crabbing off docks. They're interfering with people launching and retrieving boats. Uh, the summer camp a couple of years ago, I don't know if last year, was actually taking a lot of children over there. And chicken necking off.
Sure, so they learn to crab, yeah.
Okay, boats were going in and out. All you need is one prop to grab that rope, that's gonna yank our hand off.
It's not a safety.
Well, I'm just asking, I know there's a sign, but I'm asking why not? What's, what's the negative? You know, it's, it's an amenity, that's a park that goes back there, people walk right back there, I understand that. So what is the negative? If the negative is a safety for them having lines, I can understand that. But sunbathing. Why would sunbathing not be?
It's a boat. I mean, I, I think it's a boat ramp. That's what it's supposed to be used for.
Yes, they had two strollers out. While, while the family was fishing off the dock. You know, boats are coming in and out.
It's a safe.
Gene?
We're not saying they can't sunbathe on the park lot or the rest, but when they're out there on the ramps too. It's a safety issue for people.
Are you talking about the actual ramp that slopes into the water or in the dock?
The piers. Using the piers for beach chairs, sunbathing, fishing and crabbing, swimming and diving. And when the sign is clearly there, don't do it because you got boats motorized to in and out. And if somebody gets injured, then you know, gonna have big old balls to deal with. So it's a safety issue. And we're talking about, I, I myself, it's fear.
You know, mentioned, just so everybody would know, I just did some math. The investment to us, if we monitor for three days a week, ten hours, twelve hours a day. You know, mention, just so everybody knows, I just did some math. The investment to us, if we monitor for three days a week, ten hours, twelve hours a day. At ten dollars an hour plus a lawn chair and a radio, uh, it's total investment of thirty-six hundred bucks.
For what period of time, three days?
That's three days a week for ten weeks.
For the summer.
For the summer.
So it's like four thousand dollars.
I mean, when you.
And there's no other initial investment other than the swipe.
And once you start monitoring, the guy pulling boats up from Delaware, when he pulls up to that block and we go out of here.
It'll stop.
He's gonna stop going all the way up here and use the boat ramp.
So the logical thing is not a gate going down with a swipe card, but a real person thing.
Well, that's the easiest way to start. No, we didn't say that, but it's the easiest way to start.
You can step back. Part of what we talked about, Frank, this day was getting the input and letting the general manager come up with the solution for some of this. Right now, the team is implementing MO2 as written. So they're doing what they were told to do by this document, which says it's open. If we're gonna close it, then what's the implication of closing? Safety issues are safety issues. I mean, um, I don't know if you've ever been a teenage guard at a place like this. You try, you try stopping thirteen teenagers, you better have a fast budget to get hold. Police Department needs it.
No, no, I'm, I'm on situations. That's when you call right off the block.
Exactly. We're not arguing with that. I'm just trying to say, an off the cuff number of thirty-six hundred, maybe twice that much, maybe less. You've got all kinds of insurance issues here. Uh, you know, swim at your own risk, all that kinda stuff. Uh, there's a lot more to it. You sell memberships. There's all kinds of things that come in, that can come in. At the same time, that doesn't mean we don't need to get involved with safety.
Well, and it doesn't mean it needs a long time.
No.
Fix it.
Right.
I mean, I think there's some choices to be made. There's some things to understand. I oughta be able to do that fairly quickly and, and, and figure out one of the several acceptable solutions.
Short term and then a long term.
Well, you can do a short term and then a long term, sure.
Thank you.
That'll, that'll get you something even faster, which actually probably.
That's fine, but how do you, how do you do that? How do you implement that? How, how do you put that into an action plan? How do you, how do you come up with, with suggestions by sitting around and talking about it? How, how do we do that?
It's about the normal way.
How do you propose to do?
Volunteer to go out, watch.
Get rid of fifty, the fifty foot perpendicular pier, so nobody's just hanging out there anyway. Use that money, put a gate. You got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're putting his new ramp in and his new piers in, and you're putting a fifty foot perpendicular pier on the outside so people wait around while they're getting in their boats. But you don't need that because it's just a boat ramp. Drop your boat. I've been doing it since I was ten years old. Drop your boat, park your truck, go. That's what you're supposed to do. You're not supposed to hang out there.
And they just add on to that. The three of us are also coming from county meeting tomorrow and strongly object to that perpendicular pier. I mean, that's a pier. This is not a, it's a pier. So it's just asking for people to come and bring their cars.
Wasn't that for safety for them to get their boats?
Yeah, they got thirty-five piers without that.
They've got a main lagoon they can sit in.
Yeah, I got this right here. Thanks.
You're right.
Okay, now back to Jack's question. The way that we handle this is the way you handle most problems, right? Find people with some knowledge, the guys and gals who have to implement this stuff because, you know, if you tell them to do something that's impossible, then it's just not gonna get done. You sit down, talk about it, figure out plans.
Well, how about referring to the, um, Marine Advisory Committee?
As a part of that, absolutely.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Jack, just wait a minute. I think Bob wants to say something.
Sorry, Bob, you were gonna say something?
No, I, I probably had to back.
Okay.
This has been discussed multiple times, and, and I could probably get some help from Mr. Watkins over there as well. We've discussed it first, design of, uh, it's easy to say that, that extra, uh, ramp or that extra dock is a bad decision. It was actually brought from, from the, uh, committee that that was the design they thought worked best. And part of it's launching kayaks and other watercraft. Or once the boat gets launched, often they have stuff they're taking on and off, they move it up out of the way so more people can launch the boat. So there was some rationale behind the design. It wasn't just, I mean, it wasn't, the intention wasn't for crabbing pier or sunbathing. When they discussed it, that was, and it seemed reasonable.
But that's exactly where we're objecting. The additional facility. It's, they're not putting a pier where there was no pier. They're now allowing more boats there that weren't there before. It's congested enough. We don't need more.
Dan, excuse me. Let, let Bob finish, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I, you'll have an opportunity. Okay, go ahead.
So, so the advisory committee put it together and Frank jumped in if you wanted to, yes.
I'll let you finish. I know, I got something to say about it.
So we do, so it went through the committee to get where we are. There is a meeting tomorrow at Wood Park, this was the county library. Uh, it's been publicized. It's out there to discuss this even further. That's the meeting. Uh, we are going to do repairs. This all started, and the board should remember this. We talked about repairing it, sudden drop off. So all this has been discussed. It's not brand new. It's not something surprising. Uh, additionally, the, the monitoring of the ramp has occurred at least on two occasions. We did one last year where we actually had someone sit out there during busy times and track the usage of the ramp. Despite what was said here today, the, the report we received, and it was given to the board in addition, and it matched the report the Marine Advisory Committee had done several years prior. The majority of the use was from OPA residents or their guests. Now, part of the change this year was Bishopville, change in the Bishopville ramp there, which I do believe is adding congestion to our ramp because there's no longer one up there. So this is one that, that, again, it's gonna get the use now. So all those things are occurring. That extra pier is so people launching the other watercraft in, once they launch, pull their boat ramp out of the way to help clear up some congestion not created, get movement there. That, that was all reason. Frank was there. Did I misinterpret or misstate anything we discussed?
As the chair, we've discussed, uh, the MAC committee, we discussed this at length last year prior to building, really being on the committee. Problem is, people get there lining up to get into the ramp. And then that's where you get the arguments. Because somebody sits there and tries to unload the boat at the ramp, the next boat can't get in. And people get very tied up with that. So by putting a short pier off to the side, uh, front of the canal, if you will, or the cove, rather, excuse me. That provides the ability to clear the ramp quickly so that a second or a third boat can then launch their boat. Now, as far as, we also looked at the time, because I, I think, excuse me, Marty, I'm gonna throw your name under the bus. But last year, you were talking about some type of fee-based entry into that area to also address the congestion area with the parking. Now, part of the recommendation we made was between Oakham Road, I believe it is, and the current parking area, where there's a picket fence to the left and right there. That those would be pushed back to provide car-only parking. And then the current area down, uh, where, where the larger, um, parking slot would be cars with trailer. So an issue about people parking their cars and you lose your capability of parking a boat with a trailer, uh, et cetera, a car with a trailer. You're trying to launch would be mitigated by adding parking further up towards the street on both sides. Uh, we addressed also the issue of what do we do if somebody wants, or if the community wants to go with a, some type of entrance or a tag or a sticker or whatever you ought to do. There are so many people that have guests in the community on the weekends, all over the East Coast, even California we have on occasion. Where they're pulling boats into the, into the community on a Friday night. So now you've got somebody coming in here Friday night, and you're expecting them to get some type of ticket. If you put some type of gate in place, that gate will be gone in a week, probably. Somebody's gonna pull it down. Now, because they have no way, since the office here closes five o'clock, people coming in on weekends have no way of getting this valid pass, if you will, to provide an entry into the community, which is, they're legitimately here. They're guests or even family members in some cases that own property here from out of the state. So you're gonna see Delaware. You're gonna see New Jersey, Pennsylvania, all over the East Coast. Pardon?
I was gonna say, sir, we're aware of that. We live across.
I understand that. I understand that.
Gene, Gene, I, I know your hands up.
But based upon the study that was done last year, and I wasn't on the MAC committee four or five years ago, did a study before. There was a small percentage, I think over the weekend, there were like three or four people out of a hundred that entered into it over several weekends. It wasn't just a single weekend. And one of them, I think, was, was July, Fourth of July or something. Yeah, I have no problem if they wanna hire somebody.
Less than five percent.
The MAC committee would have no problem doing that. The only question about that, that we would have a concern as a MAC committee, and I'm only saying this because we discussed it, is what do you do for the people legitimately coming here over the weekends and cannot prove their valid access to the, to the ramp because they got here late Friday night? Or something of that nature.
Vote in on Saturday morning.
Pardon?
Put your vote in on Saturday morning. But you get here late Friday night. Well, I mean, if you own a piece of property in the pines, for instance, and, and you're a pines owner, you have a car. And everybody does have one, right? I mean, you can get a car with a swipe on it. If you have a swipe there, you can swipe it in the middle.
Well, I, to, to the point raised by, you know, excuse me if I don't remember your name.
Yeah.
That, the very, very easy point would be there then. You provide the address, and you call the house. Maybe you, you may or may not get honey phone at the house. But you provide a phone up to your point. Uh, they come in Saturday morning or even Friday night, doesn't matter. And they launch it. There's a, if you're, if there's some type of person, the board wants to pay for it. That's up to them. But you could have them call the address and validate it. To bring up a second point, I talked to the police chief this year when we had the crabber there that one time. I specifically went to the police chief and I said, "What's going on here?" Police chief said the signage is not such that he can accurately enforce it. Because that crabber only has to say, "My friend Bill said I can use it." So when you have something fairly general which says, "And guests," what is a guest? Define a guest to your, to the, to the point here, these gentlemen are probably worried about. When you have a signage that says, "No trespassing except for residents and guests," that little guest word throws Pandora's box wide open. Because all he has to do is know his brother or cousin or friend anywhere. You know, doesn't matter where they live. They could live up in Delaware, right up the canal, right up, uh, St. Martin's River or whatever happens to be. And you've just thrown the door wide open.
Guest could be somebody who's, be a guest of somebody who doesn't even live in Ocean Pines.
Absolutely. You got guests coming in Ocean Pines. No, no, no. I'm saying a resident of Ocean Pines, a property owner of Ocean Pines owns property. Somebody from Delaware calls his friend Bill, who owns property in Ocean Pines, and says, he could be a commercial entity. Doesn't matter. And says, "I wanna use, can I use that as your guest?" You should go right ahead. So automatically, you've opened Pandora's box to their problem.
Gene, okay, thanks, Frank.
Thanks.
If you have any other questions, I mean, I, as a MAC committee, I'll answer the questions we've discussed.
I, I just have a couple of comments to make. First of all, my wife and I went over to one of the surveys that's on that, the survey. The person there, once we entered, said, that are asking the people to pull up, are you a member of, live in Ocean Pines person, say yes. And I said, "Do you have any way of verifying what you're saying?" They said, "No." So they were just saying yes, no verification. And, uh, we looked at what they'd gone, that, a half an hour or so. Uh, in my opinion, that, if that experience there is the, was true for the whole survey, I wouldn't put a nickel into, into making policy based service. Because there was no way of verifying that, at least to this person. That's number. Number two, I find it very incomprehensible that thirteen, twelve years, I skipped one year this year, at the annual meeting, I've been saying, this is an amenity. Single-use amenity, special-purpose amenity, used primarily by adults operating motorized vehicle. And every single word in that provision is saying, we don't charge our boaters a fee to use it. But we require dog people to put up half cost of dog. We require our escape to raise half capital cost, I believe, of the escape. We require walkers to pay for play ball. We require tennis people, even though they're paying the capital fees in their assessment, they're paying a membership fee. We do it for every special purpose amenity other than trails, public parks, where somehow users are contributing either capital costs and/or they're contributing membership fee. But keep saying the boaters are exempt, keep having a lot of reasons why it can't be done. Not for all through the years why it can't be done. Including the guests coming in at twelve o'clock at night and wants to put their boat in at three o'clock in the morning to go out fishing or six o'clock in the morning. Well, that's the exception to the rule. And I don't think we oughta make policy based on the exception to the rule. How often does that wanna happen? Uh, for us to say, we're gonna deny the rest of the membership, the eight, four hundred members that we have, the, the capability of getting from this amenity revenues which will reduce their assessment. I don't care whether it's coming from guests or commercial people or whether we make the rule that members don't have to pay. But we do the same thing for the parking privilege at the beach. And I don't know why it becomes a big issue or concern about park, doing the same thing at the, at the ramp. Wait, park to say, okay, you're having a parking privilege here. You're gonna pay for that privilege. Or, or at least have permission to do it. If you're a member, you can buy one kind of pass. Kind of member, you have other. Members when have guests, they, it's their responsibility for a member to buy a guest anyway. It's not, to me, to bring up that issue, and I've heard it every single time I raise this issue, and I, I missly, I promised Tom here it would.
And I sat next to you, so you couldn't.
It could have been better than that. So at any rate, I, I'm just saying that, given that we go with dog, dog park people had a raised one, the skate, the children, I, I don't see too many seniors using. Have raised it.
Never done, Gene.
That's an interesting.
Now, with respect to kayaks and the canoes, about seven years or six years ago, Ocean Pines built the kayak launching system, which consisted of a, a small bulldozer going through. If you're standing at the ramps, it was to the, uh, right of the ramps. They bulldozed the, the underbrush out, came in with about two dump trucks full of sand to give those kayakers, put up a sign, launch kayaks over here. And, um, now I think it's all overgrown. It hasn't been maintained. But everybody, when that thing was open, at least, not everybody. The kayakers seemed, that used it seemed very, very glad that it was there. It's easy for them to launch. And they were out and away at a motorized boat that were being launched from the ramps.
To that point, in the new design, that area that looks a little sandy current is gonna be rebuilt, for lack of a better description. And revitalized in some ways. That was in the plans.
Okay, well then, I've, I've heard that the perpendicular extension going into the raccoons for launching kayaks.
No, 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 no. That's for tying up maybe after the fact to put, you know, but not so much for kayaks.
It's not, there's that fear. It's no problem.
No, they, they would use the, the sandy area that's current. There's like one shrub in the middle of the sandy.
And I think, I think personally, like anybody else who pays to do something, they're gonna have a little more respect. And you're not gonna cut out all the problems. I know Chief Massey, when we met Chief Massey about seven years ago to about putting an electronic gate, he said, "I'll support a way on that." He said, "For my policeman to be gate, is a misuse of their, uh, talent." And he said, "I don't like the fact that they have to go there and open, open those gates at morning and close the gates at." And so he said he would support some other way of, and he feels like I can bring back better monitoring, at least a six percent. The electronic things can give you all kinds of statistics for it. At any rate, uh, the last thing I'll say is that I find it kind of, uh, or maybe I said this at the beginning, I'm sitting five minutes ago. I find it kind of strange that this committee is going before the, the commission with regard to the ramp and trying to get some money for the ramp. Well, whatever, for getting any more money, what, let me start off so you can shake your head yes. I find it strange that this board will go to the commission for more money to help OPA do it, run its business. do it, run its business. And yet, keep, year after year after year, refusing to take this opportunity to get revenue out of those ramps. So, I, all I'm.
Gene, thank you.
Thanks.
For your comments. Doris, you've been very patient, okay?
First of all, I feel for you people, I understand your problem. Personally, I think the police should be out there more, but anyway. The boat club did a three-week, three-day monitoring. They found three people, not owners of Ocean Pines, to use that ramp. There are very few people that are not. Some of the people from Delaware, we put our boat in Delaware, we store it. The Delaware people bring it down here and launch it for us. They're using it for us. So, it's.
Would you subsidize the delivery of my refrigerator while I subsidize the delivery?
No, let me tell you something, which I forgot to say in the beginning. Ocean Pines was formed as a boating community, not a tennis committee, not anything else, but it was a boating committee, community.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, if you feel, this argument is.
Lily, we're not going to argue among each other, we're here to get input, okay? Thank you. Last comment, sure, go ahead.
Tom, do you have a second?
I, um, real quick.
Just.
First of all, I don't know how the survey was done. I personally have talked to an owner of one of the dealerships within 10 miles. He does work on my boat. And he told me that he puts 10 boats a week in, at that ramp. 10 a week. And sometimes in the spring, 10 a day.
Are they Ocean Pines boats?
No, no, not even.
These could be boats for people in Ocean City.
These are boats for whoever has a boat that he's storing in his back lot. And most people in Ocean Pines, as you know, store their boats in their drive. So, no, it's, there are people that are storing their boats in the back in his lot. This is the ramp he uses, because it's a nice ramp.
Where do these boats belong?
Everywhere.
Exactly, they're in Ocean Pines, is that right?
They're everywhere, Ocean City, Delaware. No, he holds, he stores boats for people all the way up to, he happens to be within 10 miles of this ramp, and he uses it. I'm just telling you what he's doing. So I didn't, I didn't get the information of whose boats they were, I apologize. Maybe they were delivered, some of them I'm sure were delivered from Ocean Pines.
Could, could we go to a commercial entity like that and say, "Hey, you can use our boat ramp for a fee?"
Yes.
Before we turn to Joe for the, because I do need the time-wise.
Okay, if I can just finish real quick. And secondly, so that's, I talked to him, just to find out how many commercial boats he puts. Secondly, I own a, I own a property over on the other side of the bed. It's a private Chesapeake Bay community called Columbia Beach. And I have the gate card to get in, because it's on the bed. They don't want everybody in the bed. It has a little punch card key reader. You put your card in, the gate opens. If you're somebody, a guest, you push, find the name of the person that owns the property, you push that, it called me on my cellphone. I push a seven, the gate opens. That's how it works, it's not rocket science. There's a camera right over the top of it, so the, they have a security guy in the neighborhood who works on the board, you know, as a volunteer position. And he monitors the computer that has this thing in it, and he can tell. And then what they also do is they give UPS, or it could be some of the boat dealers, a special code, and they find out how often they use it, and they bill them accordingly. That's how it works. It's not that hard. I mean, they make these systems. We could use it there, easily. I'll even get you the name of it if you want, and send it to you. Because I would think it'd be a great idea. And lastly, the perpendicular pier, I understand you want full boats, but you have two piers going out. I, when I go out, I put a boat on the other side. As soon as I launch my boat, I stick it to the other side and go park my ramp. My fault. Then I go.
Other side of what?
The other side of the pier. You have two outside piers. Move it around the ramp and set it out there. Right? I mean, there's that much room.
They're not in good shape, that's a safety hazard.
Well, you're putting brand-new ones in, is my point. Putting brand-new floating docks in, so they're only going to be this high off the water end? There's only going to be one dock down the middle? No, that's not true. I thought it was three.
Right over there, you want to look at it, it's your plan.
Can I see that again, Lily? Here, that's right here.
The plan was, as we, as we had it originally, was a single floating, if you go to West Ocean, excuse me. If you go to West Ocean City, look at the brand-new ramp across from South County. That was put in about three or four years ago, by the county. The plan was to put a single floating dock down the middle, with ramps on each side of the single floating dock. So the floating dock would, then you would have a constant height for stepping in and out of the boat. Identical to the ones at West Ocean City. And then also, the other thing was, it would not be further out into the canal. The cut would be back into the land, into the parking lot more. And it would be like seven foot deep bottom, whatever. Now, the point was, to your question, the little 25-foot or whatever it was.
It's a 25-foot temporary mark.
Right. Launch those two, get off the dock, get off the ramp, and just put it off to the side. And then you could walk down, it would be about a four or five-foot wide area to get to the floating dock to the right. And as I mentioned earlier, the sandy beach that was once a kayak launch is going to be rejuvenated to make it a better kayak launch. Purpose of a floating dock strictly was to clear off people from staying into, into the ramp area. And it's much safer, a floating dock at the height of the boat, than trying to come off a bulkhead or some form.
Right, yeah, we all agree with that. I agree with that. And honestly, I think you could, the perpendicular pier, if you had a gate on there, freak, half of the people that use it now probably wouldn't use it ever again. A lot of the commercials.
To the point there, we, the MAC committee really has no problem with putting a gate up front. Other than, how do you secure it, and how do you keep it functioning? Problem is, a lot of times, these gates fail.
Well, I mean, they do fail, absolutely. And I, they, I've gone to my community, and the gate's been wide open. But I guarantee you, it doesn't fail as much as the one we have now.
Well, I'm not saying.
Somebody wants to do the research from the board or have.
Gentlemen, I want discussion back and forth between you, I appreciate that. A lot of good input. I promised Joe an opportunity to talk here. So Joe, you're next, because we, we've got a lot of agenda to cover, so go ahead.
Thank you.
You, Joe, I'm so proud of you.
Time's up. Who are you again?
And address.
Joe Run, 84 Warton, 410-208-0114. J O B at outdoor.net.
Was that your jail number?
Well, I don't know, you got it done by yourself. Anyway.
Your bank.
Back in the beginning, Mr. Corbell said something about, didn't know why stories or whatever. I'm here, one thing, I like to compliment the lady right over there, Nancy Powell, for being a good journalist and covering the story. Because without her good journalistic coverage of this story, we wouldn't be here today. And none of these people who have these concerns would even know what was going on. So, I disagree with you. I think the story was, you know, the discussion started out with incorrect premise, when Mr. Clark and Jerry agreed that the ramps are in here as being open to the general public because of a mistake of the, I'll disagree with that 100%. There was no mistake. Mr. Stevens at the 8:10 meeting made the motion, we was in this room, made the motion to accept all the changes to MO2. And the motion failed. And the ramps removal was one of those lines. That motion failed. So then when the board met, back the next month on 9/17, and passed MO2, as it now stands, how many people in this room have a copy of MO2?
Right here.
Good, I figured it'd be time. You know, we were talking about these one time before.
I may have read it from then, then.
And just out of curiosity, I said, I said, "If anybody has a copy of MO something, I'll give them $500."
I got, I got it.
And there was, this was another, I knew it would be here today. This was at another time. Point is, that we don't pay attention to these things. They're airport, they're very, but anyway, Dave, you made the motion, it failed, we were back to ground zero, so there was no mistake. If there was a mistake, it was next quarter, 9/17. But anyway, but this gentleman right here, Pelter, and your group, he just told this board of directors, the fundamental thing to do. That you as a board of directors have to come to some decision, tell your general manager what you want, and he told you what the question was. We need to get control of this ramp. Control. Is that simple, really? That's what that gentleman's talking about, that's one way to get control of it. Not a lot of other ways to get control of it. As far as that ramp out there, we're going to have boats to park. I would compare that to widening the Route 90 from the last bridge to Ocean City, and making it six lanes wide going into Ocean City. All that does is create a parking lot, a wider parking lot. One place where somebody can move their boat out after they launch, get out quickly, put it on the outside, and then the next guy launches. How do we know the person's out there using that area we're putting in, it isn't going to take a half hour or more to do their work? It's all tied up again. That doesn't really solve any problem. That's useful. But anyway, I think, I think we need to get control of it. And the suggestion is, somebody may not believe about putting people, let's put some people over there and pay them. I mean, we spend money like we're around here on a lot of different things. And that boat ramp, we are a boating community, let's face it. But that boat ramp has a limited number of parking places. And the people go in there and park cars where they shouldn't be parked, so there's a problem.
Thank you. Lily, okay? Yes, good.
Since you mentioned my name, I take that as it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just going back to the original subject then, okay? And I have read this page, Dave, and I was part of that long glorious meeting in which, this is seven pages, I mean, this is one of the most complex and most evading resolutions we have, and I still think it's pretty good, actually. Now, just going to the categorization, whether they're supposed to be in or supposed to be out, okay? Maybe they, there's an intent to get them out, and they didn't get out. So let me point out that there's two categories, general use amenities, and in general, no associated user fees, I'm just pulling that up. General, in general, no associated, not no associated use, in general, okay? Sponsored groups and approved clubs use these facilities at no charge. Members, for example, in this particular case, use them at no charge. Doesn't say you can't charge anybody else. Now, the list includes boat ramps, but it includes a lot of other things that in fact the general public does use at no fee. And the skateboard park is, you know, a notable example. So, Tom Teres says, and I think you're mistaken, Tom, that, you know, we have been trying to follow the word of, of MO2, the administration has. And if that means with boat ramps out, then obviously we're not, because we got a sign that says, "You can't come in." And if it means we, we made a mistake and, and the boat ramps were supposed, supposed to be in, or in this, then we are following them. But what about basketball courts? I mean, it says specifically here, that's open to the general public, walk around the corner of this building, walk over to the basketball, got to go up boats if you're like me, and look at the sign. My point is that MO2 is generally okay, as it is, we're easing, because if control is the main issue, you can still control it. This gives you the authority to control it from a board resolution. Now, if control means that you have to pay money, and you have to pass those user fees, as Gene is suggesting, onto the boating community in some way, in other words, they'll share the cost of gaining this control, then I would suggest that you probably should move it down into the fee base that matters, with the other things. And that it would make sense to do that, because it's fee-based in general. You can still, just as all of the other things under here are allowed to be used by the general public, it would too. Except, of course, they would pay a higher fee, and you can control it down to the amount of saying, "There's only so many users." I don't know how to do that, and I don't have a boat, and I don't have a problem.
Do you favor keeping it open to the general public? Yes or no? It's a simple question.
Yeah, no, it's not a simple question. It's not a simple question. I, I, in the same sense as the, the other fee-based amenities are open to the general public, yes.
There's no fee over there now. There's no fee on the boat ramps right now.
But you didn't listen to what I said, Joe. What I said was, that you can establish a fee by using this. And should you establish a fee, it sounds to me, from what everybody's said, regarding the, the matter of control, is that absolutely yes. Absolutely yes. There should be permits, or however you want to do it. Key cards, I don't know. You should do it.
Would you sell them to non-members?
And you should, yes.
You would.
Yes, I would.
These people said they were in favor of that.
Well, as a matter of fact, I don't think they said they weren't. And I'm not, I'm not going to evade this, I don't know the answer to this.
I don't want, I don't want to take going on here, and that's not fair to you, that's fine. I'd like Thompson having his hand here, so.
We've spent a lot of time, but had a chance to say what they wanted to say, your two issues. The first and foremost is getting control of the area. Realities are, and I have been told by none other than the guru bylaws himself, that he watched the tape, made a meeting, clearly discussed that, brought the ramps out of this document, when it was finally revised, it didn't get taken out. So, was there a mistake made by the board of voting? We voted according to the way it is in front of us? Quite frankly, we got to make a decision on what to do with this area. Getting control of it, do you open it to everybody, do you sell passes, do you put an arm up, they get knocked down, they cost a lot of maintenance. There's a lot of implementation issues, which I said earlier, which I would look to Bob, give us a sense of what it is. The other piece of this is, comes to what the MAC has put together for a design, if you have someone there administering this area, they can administer the use of that side dock to make sure it's not misused. If you don't have someone there monitoring it, then you could end up with a, with an issue with that side dock being misused. All of that is an implementation having to do with the implementation plan, that I would look for the general manager to come back to the board of directors and say, "The essence of the community was certainly heard here today." Number one, get hold of control of the area. And number two, figure out what is the best methodology for managing this point. And then we as a board can decide, once and for all, whether we move the ramps down on the page to be a fee-based facility, or we keep it where it is, or whatever we do. Right now, we clearly have an issue with these issues. And I thank everybody for their, we've spent an hour and 10 minutes on this, so I think in all due respect, I.
Okay, update on Memorial Day events and plans for the ribbon cutting. I'm going to segue this right over to Bob. Aren't you? Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, that's all I want to say. Appreciate your, thanks for the input.
You're going to yell at people over there, okay?
Okay, as you all know, this weekend, Sunday, the 8th, the Yak Club, invites are out, we sent invites in addition to publicizing, so.
Very nice, Bob.
Thanks, it's marketing.
Did you get one?
You didn't get mine, did you, Jack?
It was a mistake.
Did you get your?
He invited you. My neighbor.
Did you get an invite?
All right, so, you come out in mail, we, some received by mail, yes.
I didn't get one. Think about it.
Don't want.
Yes, con. Okay, so that, that's this weekend. Some of the, the highlights are, what's that? Some of the highlights, I'd say the biggest one I'd like to highlight, ribbon cutting at 5 o'clock. That's where there's going to be some, some speaking, and some, some happiness, and I'm sure some might not find it joyful, but I think that most of us will. We're finally open, we're going to cut the ribbon, we're going to talk about some things that got us there. We've already had a lot of people calling to say they're coming, so it should be a big event for everyone. Just looking forward to having everyone here.
I'm looking forward to not having the possibility of four falling through to the event.
I saw in the paper that there were guided tours, is, you have, is that happening?
Well, they're like we did when we, when we were.
Just let people wander through.
So as they come in, you know, we'll take groups and, yeah, walk them around, it's kind of, we have, they have just a lot of activities going on.
So you have people planned to be there to do that?
Yes.
Great, okay. So we're all looking forward, and where will the ribbon cutting actually be, right in front of the building, or?
Let's go as you arrive.
We don't know. You don't know yet?
No, no, the plan, the plan right now is, when it's, when it's, we have the big banquet hall, it's, it's, certainly there's plenty of room, we can build the environment, and it allows people to keep walking the other areas while other. and it allows people to keep walking the other areas while, if they don't want to be part of it, it's not high enough parts.
What hours is Marty giving people?
You'll get a special invitation.
Actually, I've been in there three times, somebody's trying to take me on a tour every time I've gone. I got dragged through the kitchen.
Okay, any questions about the ribbon cutting? Okay.
No, but good, okay, a good show.
Weather's supposed to be absolutely gorgeous. Of course.
Yes. I forgot.
What?
I'm excited.
Put that on there.
He whispered, just so you all know, he whispered my air.
Okay, junk car update, sounds to me like that you talked.
Well, it's just part of the, we obviously, we met on Saturday morning of Memorial Day weekend, long conversation we had with Joe Moore, was what authority do we and don't we have, and how far can we go? Is, because we're obviously embarking not only on a, we have situations out there that just have not been handled. There's multiple junk cars on lots, things that aren't in shape, uh, try taking them for it, there's lots of issues that have gone on before, to try to resolve it. I know that as part of that meeting, we had asked Joe Moore to provide Bob with some guidance as to what, um, he as a general manager is empowered to do, and to basically, is there any other action that our board needs to take in order for us to, you know, want to begin to address this, and then long term, put together a game plan that allows us to not only keep piecemealing all this, but put together a full-blown plan that addresses, you know, the building that is underwater and will never get the money back, but the outside looks like devil, and we as a homeowners association, as a, as a effort of policy, need to make a decision of whether we're going to expand HOA money to fix these buildings up, even though the reality is, we may never get a dollar of that back. It is negatively affecting neighbors. And there are some more urgent actions that can be taken right now, having to do with cars and things like that. Just wanted to get an update from Bob and share here with, you know, we've heard from Joe, and just kind of where are we, and kind of addressing that issue. We spent well over an hour talking. You're asking me a question?
Hi, man.
While I did that long lead-in, you were supposed to be thinking.
Oh, there you go. Do I not cover it in a break?
Uh, I talked with Joe. I mean, we're looking at, at resolutions, looking at what the county ordinances are, uh, looking in greater detail to see how we might have support to expedite or aggressive, aggressive, because this has come up a lot in the last three, five months, and, um, we're looking holistically, not just with cars, but the condition of the properties, you know, the one burned out home, uh, you know, we have a number of issues there continuing to, to, to arise. I think it's, it cycles, I mean, a community of our size, it's going to cycle, but we're just trying to look, see if there's a better course of action, or aggressive course of action to take, so it's not delayed as much. I mean, it's, it's easy when you have eight, four hundred properties, unless you're the homeowner right next to it, then it's horrendous, we should deal with it. So we're dealing with, working through legal and looking with county statutes maybe that may, that may be able to further enhance our, our approach to crack the issues, as well as what our, our resolution files allow.
You think you'll have a little bit more information the next board meeting as to, no?
No, man, this was my update.
Well, we, obviously, we have situations right now that are affecting, I know Mr. Hickel's here, he's going to want to talk about this. So how soon can we give them some information as to what we do?
This is an issue that has been in the community for many, many years. It's not going to be solved in two weeks.
Okay.
I'm at night and a two-week mark, and you're asking me for an update. Two weeks later, we're asking for the next update. Realistically, you know, it's probably going to take thirty, forty-five days or so, if we do, it certainly will, but then I've got to bring it to the board, and then we've got to decide what policy, it's probably going to be a policy-driven thing, and not a, you know, Bob's going to go do this, we're going to need to talk about it, and, you know, when it's appropriate, when we have enough information, see how we're going to address it.
So that's a fair approach, okay. Thank you. Marty?
I understand, it, it seems like it's two weeks, but we've got property owners that have been patient to default, and I think really they're wits in. And I'm not just talking about Ed, I'm talking about Jack, I'm talking about, I'm talking Battersea. When I went over to Ed's house to look at his problem, I, I mean, I was stopping my car and getting out and taking photographs of three army jeeps under blue tarps. I mean, I saw stuff I couldn't believe, I was in Ocean Pines, it was unbelievable. The house on Battersea with four cars, one of them on jacks that isn't safe. I don't know what authority we need. No, stripped down, comma, partially wrecked, comma, or junk motor vehicle, comma, or sizable park thereof, comma, shall be permitted to be parked on any street and section, or the subdivision, or on any lot. Period. What do we do to enforce that DR? I can't believe it, they scored.
You know what, we've had this conversation a lot, and yes, we all want to wreck, but in order to do that, it's probably going to cost the association money to do that. We're probably not going to recoup that money. I, I know your answer is, I'll usually do it, and then we'll sue them for it, but you can't get blood out of a turnip, so.
I think you're talking about a house, not a yard.
I'm talking about anything, I'm talking about even, even just cutting the grass, and it costs us money to do that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I, I, where I am, have enough properties that are, have been abandoned, and trees on them, and just drive down my street, it's, it's, it's definitely one of those. Um, I got it, Marty, I live, I live on a street that's littered with that, but, but at what expense to the association members to? I, I worry about money not being able to be recouped.
I know.
Money that, I know you don't.
Our job is to enforce the declaration restrictions, and anybody that thinks that's not a violation, the declaration restrictions is reading in the air.
Okay, let me ask you a question, Marty. Excuse me, Marty, I'm not looking at, you and I have talked about it, we're not, we're not in disagreement.
Nor am I.
You know, none of us are, these cars need to go. The question becomes, okay, you're in violation, continuous violation, whatever you want to call it. The, the, part of the reason we had Joe come to the meeting and talk about this at the board meeting, was, okay, we have a violation. What do we do now? What is the next step? Can we take a tow truck and just go on their property, grab the damn piece of junk and haul it off? Do we have to have a court order? What, what is it that we have to have that enables us? It's one thing to say they're in violation, it's another thing to say, we need to do something about this.
I'm with you, and that's, that's why he was there. This is five years.
Today for, how are we going to do it?
And, and honestly, Marty, I'm dead serious, I have the same problem where I live.
If this was next door to me, this wouldn't be a problem.
Absolutely, personally, I'm not going to.
November ninth, two thousand seven. Remedy of the association. If the board of directors chooses to authorize me to do so, I can file a complaint for declaratory judgment in circuit court for Worcester County. Such action would be warranted by the fact that there is an actual controversy for the court to determine that is the forcible prevention of an owner from entering onto his property by an inspector at the time. I'm advised, the inspector can, or was assaulted by the owner by throwing him, throwing a flashlight at the guy and ordering him off the property. Should the board choose to do so, an alternative action would be to invoke the provisions of the specific entry upon the land by two-thirds majority vote of board of directors, as is evident by the context of the authority, the board by two-thirds vote cannot only vote to authorize entry upon the land, but can thereafter repair, maintain, restore the lot and the exterior of the building, and any other improvements erected thereon, so forth and so on. So basically, he figured it out in two thousand seven.
Amen, Jack, we're reinventing the wheel here.
That's right. And I, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to set anybody up or make anybody look bad or anything of that nature. I'm really not.
Yeah, but it is, it is a problem, Jack.
It's wonderful.
We, we.
I know it, I've read it myself. What nobody seems to have an answer for, the board of directors votes for these cars to be removed. Okay? What are the legal steps that have to be taken for a tow truck to go on the property and actually do it?
I think you called it, what do you call it, declaratory, what?
Which means you have to go to court and get a declaratory judgment that says you can do that. Which means, we can't just vote to go send a tow truck out to pick up a car. We have to go to court and ask for the right to do it.
Well, I read it.
That's how I read that. So if that's what we need to do, then that's what we need to start doing. Because I can assure you, our, my four years here, us voting to take people into continuous violation and taking them to, and sending them letters from a, I mean, it's a waste of time. It's an absolute waste of time for most of these situations. What I, the reason Joe was there was to help us understand, what is it we have to do as a board to vote at the end, which we started to do at the last meeting, that says, take them to court, get whatever ruling we need? You can't just assume because we say, hey, Bob, go get a truck truck, you can't do that.
Okay, let me, let me posit this, Bob. How long would it take you to codify a plan of action, a, a, a consistent process by which you enforce these guidelines with Joe Moore? How long would it take you to do that?
Seven years so far. I'm going to tell you, between thirty and forty-five days, as I say, Sharon.
That's acceptable to me.
The rationale behind that is, a great example, I had a conference call, Joe and Chris, Joe Moore and Chris Woodley, about junk vehicles, we talked about county, what, what the county declares as, as a junk vehicle, we went over that. We're going through all the steps, the legal side, to figure out what we can do, how quickly we can do it, and we're going to put it in writing so everyone sees it, so it's clear. We've got resolutions, we've got bylaws, but there's some, some people say it's clear as this, it's clear. Look, if you all want, tell me to go start towing vehicles, give me the guideline that supports that, done. Nobody knows.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Joe, this is why these aren't effective. Please let me talk.
Joe, you're interrupting, please.
Again, Joe interrupts because he can't play fairly. Here's what I'm saying. If that's the case, if you allow me the opportunity, it's, it's highlighted, the board's made it an issue from, like, it's heightened, it's bubbled up where it's a top issue, we had Joe in two weeks ago, since then I've followed up with him, he's pulled some additional documentation, and we're coming up with our plan. I agree with you guys, and as I said earlier, I wouldn't want to be next to one of, you know, with these, so I went out and looked at the Battersea property today. I, I agree with everything everyone's saying, but we can't just fling at it, we have to actually put the process.
But it is, hold on, Marty.
Okay.
It is, it is now one of your number one priorities, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thirty is better than forty-five? I can live with forty-five, but thirty's better than forty-five? But it's one of your number one priorities?
It is a priority.
It is your, your num, one of your number, it is your number one priority?
It is not my number.
Okay.
Day-to-day activities, day-to-day operations is number one priority. You can't pin me down, say.
No, I'm not, I'm not, really, I'm not trying to pin me down. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get it in an actual place.
Five days. And the only reason I'm giving that much time back, we have another board meeting in between.
Exactly.
And I'm all on the.
And it can be done.
Well, it may be. I'm not, there's no hesitation on our part.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Can I ask a question about our side?
Yes.
Have you ever gotten the, I keep calling it the UCC, shame on me, that's what it was for thirty-five years. Have you ever gotten them to, have you ever been able to file a complaint about your problem?
I filed a complaint via sending them an email, only asked them to come out. And they came out and said they can't look under the covers, they can't enter the property.
Okay.
And I'd like to bring up that.
Wait, wait, we'll, we'll let you.
Very, very right, the people understand.
Go ahead.
We asked Joe at the meeting about lifting covers, you know, looking under, those type of things, and, and there wasn't a clear yes, actually step on and do it.
We do have it written, because Ford, Ford was the incident that he just read about, where the inspector went on the property and went to the cover and got hit with a flashlight.
And again, we, we want to make sure we have a clear process, and the board agrees with the process we're going to follow, at least the majority of the board, and that's what we'll start to do, whatever it may be. But there's no, and, trust me, I'm as frustrated as everyone, with the exception of folks living next to these properties. I mean, we want to enforce it, it hurts all of our property values to have properties in poor condition. It's just done.
I appreciate that, and, and so there's Jack, comfortable with the timeframe, it's a priority, and we'll let the other people talk, I want to go run the table.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm, I'm.
Marty? Cool, everybody else? Okay, I know Mr. Hickel wants, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I said I'm there.
Okay, Mr. Hickel.
Okay, uh, first, I appreciate putting this item on the agenda, of course, not on the agenda, so I really appreciate that. Um, first, I made some pretty pictures. Now, I, I, I've heard you all talk, we agree there's problems with, with vehicles, all right? This is what I put up with for seven years now, all right? The, these covers are moldy, they're cracking, it's ridiculous, all right? There are two cars here, one has not been moved, well, I've been here seven years, they haven't been moved in seven years, all right? I know for a fact they are not registered, all right? I won't tell you how I know that. I know for a fact, all right?
Marty, you give him any advice?
I'll hide my advice, they both put it through the sound.
Blame it now, one has flat tires, one has flat tires, the other had a tree limb go through the windshield, busted the windshield, all right? So they can't be, they're junk vehicles, according to your own guidelines, they're junk vehicles, all right? Here's another one, Battersea Road, it's like I'm living in a junkyard, all right? This one has, I don't, I have no idea how long that's set there. Okay? It's ridiculous. Here's the worst, here's the worst. This is the one with the four vehicles on it, one of them up on jacks, all right? None of them registered. It's crazy, all right? Here's one that I was referred to, Willow Way, all right, in South Ocean Pines, all right? Here's a house with two Volkswagen buses sitting there, all right? This one has weeds growing around the wheels, sitting there, again, for who knows how long, all right? Here's Willow Way one A, all right? You will note there's a Volkswagen in the driveway, there's a Volkswagen parked along the road. Probably weren't allowed to park vehicles along the road. So, okay, I hear that everybody agrees that we got to do something, so I got two things to say, all right? Well, they do recycle, though, we, you can see that. They recycle their trash. Yes, that's good, great. I would suggest that we differentiate the property problem from the junk vehicle problem. Seems to me that can be addressed a lot quicker than the, the housing problem we have. Make it two different issues, basically, all right?